I ask that you turn off the word pagers, cell phones, other electronic devices.
Yeah, we'll start off with a presentation from Ms. McKenna, from here, just sit, or it's up to you. I was going to talk about the code of conduct that's on the agenda tonight. This document is fluid document required because of the new dignity for all act to have it approved by July 1. But as we talked this morning at the policy committee meeting, you will most likely see this again in September or October to approve again once we have all the guidance on the dignity for all students act. The law goes into effect July 1 and we received no guidance from state education department. And we received an email this afternoon, late this afternoon, that stated that there is going to be an addition to that law introduced this week that will engage and involve cyberbullying and the school district's role in policing cyberbullying. So we anticipate what we have to talk about tonight to be changing. We need to just make sure that we're in accordance with the law and have approved. And we will, again, we should be meeting with the committee over the summer and we'll be meeting with policy in September and then should we present it again in September or October.
As Mr. Buck said, at about 4 o'clock this afternoon, we received a information, and I'll just read what we received. He said, "A bill has been introduced to both the House and the legislature. They would expand the dignity for all student act to include cyberbullying among other provisions. It was negotiated between the governor, assembly, and the senate over the past week. We have raised concerns, but those concerns have not been addressed. The bill is almost certain to be passed by the end of the week, if not earlier. It is very problematic imposing significant new administrative mandates and in some cases requiring investigations by the school administrators of a student's online activity wholly outside of the school domain." Which means they now want us to make us accountable for what the students are passing among themselves at night on Facebook, Twitter, or whatever, if it comes into the school. It's now going to be a problem for the school to investigate. So this is taking it to a whole new ground. Before, as a school, we only became involved if the texting or the twittering was occurring between 7:00 a.m. and say 5:00 p.m. when the sports teams are here. But anything that happened outside of the school, we automatically turned over to the faculty department, which became a situation. But now, what they're asking us to do now is for us as administrators of the school to be responsible for what goes on at home. I can't tell you how this is going to play out, but I can't even tell you that our code of conduct is done. We have been working on it continually since probably February. And every time we go or we think we have it done, the state has come out with new mandates or new regulations. They were supposed to provide us with templings to file, they were supposed to provide us with training. None of that has occurred yet. Okay, so they're behind in providing us with what we need to complete the code of conduct. But what I'll give you today, before we get into the code of conduct, is the DASSA, the dignity for all students act. I'll let you know what that is about, so you can see how it impacts our code of conduct. So what exactly is DASSA? Is the dignity for all students act. It is a policy of the state to afford all students of public schools an environment free of discrimination or harassment. It is to foster civility in public schools, provide conduct which is inconsistent with the school educational mission. The district has to prohibit all forms of discrimination, all forms of harassment based on actual or perceived race, color, weight, national origin, ethnic group, religion, religious practice, disability, sexual orientation, gender, or sex by school employee or students on school property or at school sponsored activities and at events that take place locations off school property. Who is responsible for this? At least one employee at every school shall designate a dignity act coordinator. They must be thoroughly trained to handle human relations in all the following areas: race, color, weight, national origin, ethnic group, religion, religious practice, disability, sexual orientation, gender, and sex. The board of education must appoint a dignity act coordinator and share their names and contact information with all school personnel, students, parents, and persons in parental relations. How do we do this? Each school district must provide training for all district employees. Eaton will be using the O'Wallace Anti-Bullying Program and will have two turnkey trainers to provide the training for the district. The training will include ways to promote and support a school environment free from discrimination and harassment. It will provide intervention techniques and it will emphasize positive relationships. Instruction will begin in kindergarten, go up through K-12. Include components on civility, citizenship, and character education. It will instruct the students on the principles of honesty, tolerance, personal responsibility, respect for others, observances of laws, courtesy, and dignity. The district will investigate all complaints of harassment and discrimination, either formal or informal, and take prompt corrective measures. What these measures will be, until we go through the O'Wallace training and we all get trained in it, until the state mandates how they want us to handle some of these, I really have no idea at this point. Until we're trained, until the state tells us the steps they want us to follow. DASSA states, "No students shall be subjected to harassment by employees or students on school property or at any school function." And an age appropriate version of the policy shall be included in the code of conduct adopted by the boards effective July 1, 2012. So whatever code of conduct we come up with, all three schools have to have a version that is grade level appropriate. I cannot take the one for the high school and hand it out at the GLP or the elementary building. Rich and Danielle will look at the code of conduct and put it at grade level appropriate for their buildings. The board of education and the trustees of every school shall create policies and guidelines that shall include policies intended to create a school environment that is free from discrimination or harassment. And the board of education will provide training programs to discourage the development of discrimination or harassment and that are designed to raise awareness and sensitivity of school employees to potential discrimination or harassment and to enable employees to prevent, and this is the big one, learn how to respond to discrimination or harassment when they see it occurring in the school building. So that basically is the DASSA's guidelines for right now. The commissioner's responsibility, and this is where we're falling a little behind, is they are to provide direction, develop model policies, and direct services to school. That has not been completed yet. They need to provide grants for funds appropriated for this purpose. That has not been done yet. And they are to set forth regulations to assist school districts in implementing this article, including regulations on developing measured valence and age appropriate responses to violations of this policy. So where are we right now? The district code of conduct has been updated to meet all DASSA regulations up until this point. Now we have to look at it again to include whatever the state's going to pass at the end of the week for the cyberbullying. And then it will have to be updated again. All schools have developed age appropriate versions of the code of conduct encompassing the new DASSA regulations. This has been completed at all three of our buildings. Eaton has two people who will be going to Dallas. Funding provided by the teacher centers to get trained in the O'Wallace program in order to train our staff for the 2012-2013 school year. Somewhere around January, I wrote a grant to the teacher center requesting funding for us to get the O'Wallace program into Eaton and the grant was turned down. Then somewhere about the end of May, middle of May, the teacher center contacted me and they said that they would send two teachers from Eaton and they would pay all expenses to get us trained in the O'Wallace program and to bring the program back and teach our staff and other districts in our area. So on December 26th, or sorry, June 26th, Tammy Finity and myself will be going to Dallas for three days to get trained in the O'Wallace program and we will come back and turn and train all our staff. And our staff needs everyone from bus drivers to kitchen help, to teachers, to support staff, to secretaries. Everybody in the district needs to be trained to know how to react to any instances of discrimination or harassment. So that's where we are with DASSA. And you have looked at the code of conduct that we have given you a copy of. So far, we are up to date with it as best as we can be and we will keep implementing it. On our committee, we had teachers from the GLP, we had a teacher from the GLP, we had a teacher from the elementary, we had teachers from our building. We had a parent, we had Officer McCarthy, we had students. When we first looked, they started formulating this new code of conduct. We do have to have a public hearing. However, it's hard to have a public hearing yet when everything's not completed and everything has not been formalized or accepted. So we're hoping to do that very early in September, that the state gets on board and we get everything completed as we need to. So I'll answer any questions if there's any questions at this point to the best of my ability. But it's really is an ongoing process. There's a 4 o'clock this afternoon, there's going to be new state mandates out there for us.
For the training, is that just one time or is that a yearly event?
What it is, is you go for three days. The three day training will be from 8:00 to 4:00. Then you have online communications with people from the O'Wallace program. And then you meet once a year. And it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing training. They keep bringing you back and training you again. So it's not a one-shot deal and you're down and out.
For the teachers as well, is that the teacher that's like yearly, annually?
Oh yes, annually, they'll be updated annually. As we get new information, we learn new techniques, we will keep them posted as soon as we learn it. We won't let it go whole year. When we learn something new that we feel that they need to know, we can either do it at a teachers faculty meeting or in service, we could take an hour or two and keep them all updated.
Does this program also educate students as well?
Yes, part of it is student education. They're going to provide us with materials to bring back, to give to our teachers, to help our teachers educate our students. It's an all encompassing program, not just for the teachers, but it also encompasses the students. Any other questions?
So there's details through the code of conduct with a question, I'll explain.
Oh yeah, if you want, and then when, once we get to the committee meets and then committee meets with policy September, if there's any specific things that you'd like to address that I can do. Basically, we need something, we need something in place to start this school year, something in place for July. And then we'll be working on it because it's in progress, organizing, because it's a lot of shit. We're hoping, we got the time this morning, we're hoping that everything the state is supposed to get to us and we'll have some final directions, so we can have a final guide for somehow to go to the board and then we can move forward.
Steve, our legal and policy committee met this morning and we looked at this and we decided that we would wait until September, pass this for now, then wait until September and then we're going to look at it and meet with the district committee, code of conduct committee, and possibly make some, suggest some revisions, then have a public hearing regarding revisions and then the revised code of conduct can be presented to the board.
All set? Thank you.
We're going to, at this time, move up one of our presentations from the end of the evening. Mr. Schaper, talk a little bit about music.
Back in June of last year, I was asked to look at some equity issues within the music department. And of course, at that time, we'd already given out assignments for the upcoming year to faculty and staff. But I told the department members who asked me to look at this that I would put on a list of things to do starting in October of this year, and I did, Mr. Graff and I. Of course, at the time, we undertook this. We had no way of knowing the impact of the 2% tax cap and what its effect would be on Eaton Central Schools. We had no way of knowing that there was going to be a retirement in the music department in the form of Mr. Furlong. So we came up with many problems that we had to address. And one is, you see before you, this was basically the last meeting I had with the music department. Two board of ed members were there. A couple of things. One, how to reorganize the duties in the music department, knowing that we were going to be down one FTE. And it was, as you see there in front of you, everybody got that? K-6, in K-6, Mrs. Jeffers was going to continue at GLP, however, it was going to be reduced. Some FTE time commensurate with the loss of a section of kindergarten and second grade. Mr. Vona was going to continue at Eaton Elementary four days a week and one day at GLP. Mrs. Bayhun continued band, lessons and ensembles at Eaton Elementary. Mrs. Olman with string lessons and ensembles at Eaton Elementary. At 7:12, and this is where more of the realignment came of the duties. Mrs. Tylock was going to continue with the vocal lessons and ensembles. And students in seventh and eighth grade who needed a music credit would be enrolled in chorus. Now sometimes we have students who are not band orchestra students, they are not chorus students. And by virtue of the region's action plan many years ago, they need to have a music credit. And it's either general music or, in the case of some of these students, band orchestra and chorus. We typically have just a handful of students who do not take band orchestra and chorus. And Mrs. Tylock said she would have them in the music, the chorus program, involved with the chorus program. Because as you'll see later, we're trying to minimize and or eliminate courses that have under enrollment of 10. Mrs. Roberts would cover all band lessons, including those covered by Mr. Furlong. And that is a very big undertaking. Partly to make this happen, we, as we were looking at the schedules, we realized that we had 11 students who adhered to form and getting single lessons, solo lessons by themselves all year. And we, and four students, two twosomes, were getting lessons as a duo. Administration recognizes that some students are playing such unique instruments, like the tuba or maybe like the bassoon, and/or are of a skill level that is head and shoulders above the rest of the students, that they require individual lessons. And we certainly don't want to take out the professionals prerogative to do that. But we all understand that that happening, we may have to swell slightly the numbers and other group lessons. Also, to make this happen, junior high band will continue to meet on alternate days. Senior high band will meet on daily, as it has. But wind ensemble will meet on an alternative basis, alternate days, where in the past they've had that every day. Mrs. Martella, Mrs. Martella, who was covering the string lessons at the junior high, she will continue with that. Alternate days for junior high and daily for senior high. Her student load is a bit lower. And Mr. Graff and Mrs. Martella in the music department realized that she may need to pick up some of the duties if they come about for theory and/or jazz. And there was talk of combining them, because again, each one had an enrollment of under 10. At the time, we talked about this, their theory was at three and jazz was at four. Music in our lives. We found that the senior high students have to have a music credit. And often, if they have not been involved in band orchestra or chorus, this comes down to a chorus called music in their lives, in our lives. As we looked around at some other schools, we found that they were fulfilling this with some other fine arts requirement, like in art and/or dance. So we have that as an option as well. And there's a possibility of also helping out with RTI, ELA, or math where there's overloaded sections and/or cafeteria coverage. And as we discussed before, one, perhaps two of these, but certainly not all of these, because it would be impossible to do all of that and still cover all the string lessons. We did find that in doing this study we were asked to do, that in fifth and sixth grade, students who were in band and orchestra and chorus had as much as 235 minutes of music in a week. That would be a general music class of 45 minutes, an instrumental lesson of 30 minutes, two ensemble rehearsals of 80 minutes, 40 and 40. Noted last year, they were 45 and 45. And one to two periods of chorus, once again, two 40s, 80 minutes, total of 235 minutes. And I looked at this and I'm going to give you a memo I sent home to the parents in fourth and fifth grade, because these are students who will be affected by moving band and orchestra before school. That was a decision I came up with based on the amount of minutes we were spending on music. And as I looked at the 235 minutes that a fifth and sixth grade band orchestra student, chorus student, spent on music, it was the equivalent of 70% of one instructional day. 70% of one instructional day. We teach ELA the most, we teach math the next most, and we teach music third. This eclipses science and social studies and it was my decision to move it to before school. And I'll give you the parent memo in a moment. I also was looking at the fact of right size in band and orchestra in fifth and sixth grade. We have had student population drop over the last eight or so years of about 25%. We had about 150 in a grade level, we have now about 113 in a grade level. So our student population in four, five, and six decreased by about 25%. Yet our band and orchestra recruiting did not go down 25%. It didn't even stay where it had been, it went up by 25%. So part of this, and I've talked to the music teachers about it, is really impressed upon the students and their parents, the formalizing the expectations that are in our student handbook for our students regarding practice, preparation, attendance of school, attendance of lessons, attendance of rehearsals, and attendance of performances of course. That was the last meeting with the music department and there were a couple of board members there as well. Like to send around something that I sent home to fourth and fifth grade parents. And then I'll get to some of the questions that have come up from faculty and staff and/or parents. And some of these were from board members also. This also went home in a June newsletter to the parents. And I'm not naive, I know that not everybody reads my well crafted newsletters. So I made a global connect call because there was also some other important information in there about op-outs, about the fifth grade human development mini lesson that we had, and about the music program. So I did a global connect call, call parents' attention to this. This was, like I say, a memo that went home to fourth and fifth grade parents. And I talked about doing a review of the music program. I talked about, again, the amount of time spent on general music, instrumental lessons, two ensemble rehearsals, one to two chorus rehearsals. And I talked about the fact that I was using the 70% of one instructional day for music, eclipsing, eclipsing science and social studies. As a matter of fact, is Mr. Graff here? Mr. Graff, you know, case in point, we were on our way up to a music department meeting and a sixth grade teacher was standing there, saw Mr. Graff, and asked about openings at the high school because I don't have enough time to teach science. And of course, this teacher didn't know we were on our way up to a music department meeting. But that is one of the problems. We also have a conflict with the RTI periods in, not just students getting RTI, we've worked around that, but the students who remain with their homeroom teachers, who are not involved in RTI, but they're still with their homeroom teachers at a time when band orchestra and/or chorus are rehearsing. That is, as little as two to three students per homeroom, they are not in the same instructional groups. And the hopes of small group instruction in either ELA or math is simply null and void by virtue of so many students being taken out of band orchestra and chorus. That is another consideration. Then I tell them of my decision, I looked at the schedule for next year. We have seven Mondays off from school. So to put band orchestra before school on a Monday was going to limit the amount of practice opportunities we had. My decision to put fifth and sixth grade, fifth band and orchestra before school Tuesday, Thursday, and sixth band orchestra before school on Wednesday, Friday. We have done a study of transportation and we know that high school buses have more than enough room to accommodate our fifth and sixth graders who parents may opt not to transport them or to carpool. General music, instrumental lessons, and chorus will continue as they have during the regular school day. Some of the questions that have come up and some of the answers we have. Faculty and staff asked, "Will the teachers be compensator?" The teachers will work the high school schedule and therefore will begin their day and end their day like a high school teacher. "What if there's an after-school meeting, like a faculty meeting, which would then take place an hour after the end of their schedule? They would not be required to come to the faculty meeting." "Is there a nurse?" There's no nurse at Eaton Elementary until about 8:15. There is a nurse at the high school, districts are required to have only one nurse. I'd like to also mention, we don't have nurses for after-school activities at Eaton Elementary ever. "What if the band orchestra teacher is sick?" They can call for a sub, as would a high school teacher. And/or, if the sickness is planned, dentist appointment, personal day, et cetera, they can notify the students and/or parents and will cancel band orchestra and lessons for that day. "How can a teacher be evaluated if their student attendance is optional?" Student attendance is not optional, but playing the band or orchestra, a student must attend school, lessons. school, lessons, rehearsals, and performances. How can an observation of a teacher be done before school? The new A P P R, which you're gonna be hearing about, gets a scheduled observation and agreed to by the principal, the evaluator, and the teacher being evaluated. If the teacher being evaluated didn't think fifth grade band was the best time to be evaluated, then that would not be agreed to. Will an administrator be present every morning at seven thirty? Sometimes, but I don't see how that is perfect. The bus. The bus rides are too early and/or too long for students in the outer part of the district. As I said before, parents may decide to drive, parents may decide to carpool, the bus is an option. Like to make everyone aware that you've probably seen some literature where some schools are considering flipping their high school day with their elementary school day. Have you seen that literature? Because high schoolers are on a different, uh, cycle by some research that's been done and elementary school kids are on a different cycle by virtue of some of the research that's been done. So I have no, I don't have no opinion on this, but, um, there is that research out there. Another concern, parents who can't drive their kids, can't carpool, and don't want the kids to take the high school buses, may have their students drop lessons. That is a concern, a legitimate concern. Some of the parents' questions have been, the bus ride is too long and too early. Mentioned the answer to that already. Don't want elementary students to ride with high school students. Again, uh, this, we've done this before, we've done this for our ELA and math morning prep sessions, we've done it rather successfully. It's, uh, somewhat commonly known that high schoolers are fairly docile in the morning. This is where everybody chuckles politely. Also, we have a local district to our south that is putting their entire K-12 run on the same, so they've looked at this issue and this is not uncommon in smaller school districts. The day is too long, or it will make the day too long. That is a justifiable concern. And then many parents have brought up, in their opinion, the importance of the music program and the importance of the music program here at Eden, and I agree with them, it is Do you have any questions about either the, uh, last meeting with the music faculty and/or the memo to fourth and fifth grade parents?
Did we leave it there until the morning?
That came up, uh, at the very end of the process. While we were talking about this all the way through, nobody mentioned any alternatives at all. And the end of the day was mentioned the afternoon. Several parents have said there are so many conflicts at the end of the day with gymnastics and dance and sports, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that that might be very, very It sounds like you're feeling mostly concerns or complaints and not getting positive comments. And, um, but to me, this all makes good sense. And I just wanna say that I think that's the definition of leadership. That you probably knew that going in, that it was gonna be a little controversial. These are significant changes, but you're going ahead anyways because it makes good sense. So I wanna thank you for your leadership. Thank you. Anything else?
There's probably much about little details to work out, but, well, it's a viable program. I'm sure there's lots of details still to be worked out, uh, here and there, but that comes with any kind of change, any kind of new program, so that's something that I still have to work through, I'm sure, so still some nagging questions about.
Yeah, I expect to see some, uh, some things we do have to work through and some, uh, little glitches we have to work out. Uh, we were also asked if, you know, there was a secretary or custodian in the building, yes, the answer to that is yes, they both start at seven A M. But, you know, there will be little problems to work out here.
And you're hoping to suggest on, uh, on, for those things?
Yes. I told the music faculty that we have to, one of the things I talked about, use a nuclear engineering term, was we have to maintain critical mass. Critical mass in our band orchestra and chorus. And critical mass, we need so many trumpet players, we need so many flute players, so many brass players, et cetera, et cetera, so we can have an ensemble. And so we have to be vigilant to having the critical mass so we have a good sound, so our groups sound good, kids get a good experience. The same is true in the orchestra, we need to have so many first violins, those who are gonna eventually be second violins, violas, jellos, and basses, yes.
And most of the feedback you're getting is around seventh, sixth graders, that you're hearing?
Thus far, thus far.
Thank you very much. Before we get started, since I was still late in here, I had time, but, um, that was clocked. Well, first thing, welcome Mike Olensky to their first meeting and joining the board, so, um, love him. Engage and enjoy yourself as you go through the process. As we go through the first meeting for you, Ty, feel free to vote on what you want, or you need to abstain because you don't know enough, or you feel like that's not your area and stuff like that, that's okay too, so just, uh, whatever you're comfortable with and, uh, okay.
I would just jump in there, um, Mr. Searcy, and introduce Andrew Cucky, who is our new student rep, he was eager to start, and the new student council president, if I got that correct. For joining us.
Oh, you've got all the history too? Okay, you've got it more than once. And Andrew, if there's something that we're talking about, feel free to give your opinion and join in.
So what you gotta do is go for it. All right, okay, uh, item four, approval consensus items. A through...
Oh, consensus, any consensus items to be removed?
Any consensus item to be removed?
I am, I, M, N, P.
I, M, N, P. Any violins? Okay, um, approval consensus item, A through H, uh, J through L, um, O, N.
Discussion, all in favor? I propose a motion, parents.
Okay, item I, approval of budget transfers over ten thousand dollars upon the recommendation of superintendent, budget transfers over ten thousand be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion, I have no question, that's a big line item, budget transfer, as for subdays?
Subdays, right.
Why, why do we have so many, or subdays?
We have, um, been so many new initiatives this year, we have more teachers, longer conferences, whatever, we've also had, you know, the listings. And I'm hoping I might give to guess your kind of change, look at the change, you can raise your hand if you want.
I think we resolve that in that, um, next year because of the habit that we've inserted, um, faculty, uh, budgeted, uh, hosting lines to accommodate some of that action. Right on track, we've spent the summer, uh, defining exactly what we need for race the top, or something, or something, other days to get a lot of cool ideas, so we can pull back on track.
Discussion questions? All in favor?
I.
Propose extension, motion, parents.
Item M, appoint supplemental activity advisors and coaches for the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year, that upon the recommendation of superintendent, the following personnel will be appointed as supplemental activity advisors and coaches for the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year, provided that these appointments will not be effective in service to the district, pursuant to their to shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory record or regulations, or fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment, see attached list.
Second.
Discussion, obvious question I have is, most of these positions are being approved and work is already done?
They aren't, they're all, they've all already been approved, there's only the two highlighted ones that, that had not been approved and, um, there were some changes and there were late entrance into the, um, into the cross, and some of the cross and modified track. Everything else sort of.
What, across, track a little more, or?
Correct, but in order for that to begin, uh, we're signed.
So somehow the individual didn't complete the season and somebody else filled in?
The individuals started for the time of season.
Well, the modified, the modified track, one, we had, we had head x, but that was only that is a faculty question, so. Both, both were turned in and both were, uh, were missed to your, uh, initial list.
Uh, is there a question, discussion? All in favor?
I.
Propose extension, parents.
Item N, um, recommended most that upon the recommendations superintendent, the following personnel will be appointed as supplemental activity advisors and coaches for the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen school year, provided that these appointments will not affect, not be effective in service to the district, pursuant to their to shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory record or regulations, or fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment, see attached list.
Second.
Discussion, um, I'd like to make a motion to table this until we can be advised, advice
The current list, from what?
The current list, you can't tell, is everybody for the whole year, everything's highly, is everyone what's different, this year or any change?
You haven't, uh, these are all the, these are all the new appointments.
Which ones are eighteen? Right, but are every one of them the same as I showed?
That I can't, no.
That was my question, I can't tell, so I'd like to, I'd like to know who's different. Really just a blanket list of people.
Well, it's, it's, the people we're asking, we're recommending to your point.
Right, so the ones that we currently have, we already know, we've already looked at and thought about, um, but it's people different, you know, I'd like to know who they are. Any motions to, uh, table this at the meeting?
Sir.
Any questions or any concerns about doing that, if anybody?
So is that, um, I mean, are sports programs are finished, so?
They will, yeah, we, our next meeting is July second, so that we should be okay, other than the fact that, uh, none of the, uh, summer, um, the summer, uh, things that we'll have, we have, for example, like football, we'll have, we'll have to. I mean, I don't know exactly when their summer programs, so, uh, we should be okay to.
Any other questions? All over table?
I.
Propose, stay?
Item P, uh, recommendation, most, upon the recommendation of superintendent, the first reading, the following policies be approved. Uh, one, item thirty-four, ten code of conduct, item two, seventy-three, four, period use of computerized information resources, item three, number seven, five, five, four, dignity for all student act, item four, number eight, two, four, two, civility, citizenship, and character ed, item five, eighty-two, seventy-one, internet safety, internet content filtering.
Second.
Uh, discussion?
Uh, we looked at these this morning in the Eagle and Policy Committee and, um, they're all okay for, uh, passage, but there is a slight change which Ryan has to number two.
Um, yeah, number two, and we will, we will reprint for the second reading in the final one, um, in the, in the second, um, policy dealing with student use of computerized information in the, um, first paragraph at the bottom of the page, under standards of acceptable use, um, it will read, this policy does not attempt to articulate all of the required and/or acceptable uses of the DCS, nor is the intention of this policy to define all inappropriate usage. Administrative regulations, which will include the code of conduct and further define the guidelines of appropriate use of conduct. So we had it, will, which will include this thing.
Are there any? Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
I.
Propose, extensions, motion, parents. Uh, this time, we invite anyone who wants to speak for two minutes, again, it's two minutes, and please, uh, give your name and identify your allegations.
Good evening. My name is Annette Baynon, instrumental music teacher of grades four through six. Tonight, I represent the music teachers of our district. And the music faculty, we do not recommend or support the drastic changes as decided by our principal at Eden Elementary. By placing elementary band and orchestra before school, this drastic change will eventually kill the program and ultimately impact all other music programs throughout the district. Our elementary principal, acting as a committee of one, has made this decision, and if one looks closer at the claims he makes, are the facts truly being represented? The real questions are, by placing elementary band and orchestra before school, what other program that is of equal educational value will be put into the school day that connects kids to the school and gives ownership to their learning? What exactly is to be gained by diminishing a successful music program and will these gains be measurable? What other districts, what are other districts doing to maintain course subjects without displacing music, an equally valuable course subject? And the biggest question, is this what is best for the kids of Eden? Our recommendation at this time would be to wait and not make this drastic change, but to instead involve parents, teachers, and administration in examining what other successful, high-ranking school districts are doing. Only then can we make a well-informed decision to benefit all students.
Good evening, I'm Ellen Kattley, I teach fifth grade, um, ELA and social studies, and I was one of those teachers who complained about not having enough time to teach social studies this year, um, because of the, what happened, we have two RTI periods every single day. Band and orchestra students leave during one of those RTI periods, as Mr. Shaver mentioned. Mr. Shaver did, um, mention a couple of times that we would get more time for teaching science and social studies with this new schedule. And, and I was kind of happy for that, but I gotta tell you that I do have the proposed schedule in front of me for next year. And all I see in, um, in the morning is one forty-five minute period on Tuesday and on Wednesday in the afternoon, one forty-five minute period. And that would alternate with course, so on those, of those times when Mr. Boney doubles up in course, I wouldn't even have that. So in reality, we're not getting extra time for science and social studies during that RTI time period, I still have students, I have one now, for, we need, um, for extra help in ELA, and I cannot be teaching social studies when they're gone. So I'm wondering, um, what the benefit of this is? I see it as, um, a great harm to music program, I'm not a music teacher, I'm not here to promote music, but I, I don't see the benefit because I'm not getting extra time. And I find it curious that we're so interested in right sizing the music program that it's grown too much, and yet I hear all the time of how our athletic program has grown, and good for them, I think sports are very important, but enrollment has been declining above junior, senior high also, and yet we've added sports and we applaud that, and yet we're punishing music, and I don't understand that either because music adds so much. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Denise Allman, the orchestra director of Eden Elementary School, grades four through six. On Friday night, the Western New York area hosted the historic walk, recognized worldwide when Nick Rolenda walked across Niagara Falls. It was a truly a visionary project, a dream come true, not only for Nick, but for the entire crew that prepared for years for its success. I would ask you to consider some parallels between this event and the event planned for September two thousand and twelve at Eden Elementary, which is placing the band and orchestra rehearsals before school. The walk across the gorge gave Niagara Falls a huge lift, the city will revel in the long-term impact from the media exposure. The Niagara Falls region will once again be positively considered as a vacation destination. How about Eden? Will placing the band and orchestra rehearsals before school give Eden a huge lift? Will we revel in the long-term impact as the other forty-seven public and private schools in Erie County see our outcome? Will they observe the continued growth of our programs, or will they observe a fast declining program, once forty years strong, but now barely able to survive because of the extra hurdles put in place? Do we have a safety net in place, or will we just fall? Will new families want to move to Eden with the knowledge that we no longer have a strong music program? How will this decision benefit Eden schools? Niagara Falls reaped the benefits of fame and fortune from this historic feat. What will be gained from taking band and orchestra rehearsals out of the school day at Eden Elementary? Sure, there may be some more time for remediation, but what does that do for our many students who do not need remediation? Also, enrichment takes place within our music offerings. Also, enrichment takes place within our music offerings, foreign language, history, cultural awareness, math, and science, these all take place within our band and orchestra rehearsals. Isn't this wonderful enrichment and more? Just as wiring the gorge was done carefully and slowly, we're urging the Board of Education, wise parents, talented teachers, and dedicated administrators to carefully examine the process, and see how it responds structurally, how does it respond to the elements, what is truly good for ten to eleven-year-olds? I know my time's up, so I'll, I'll go first, thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Hall, I am speaking as a parent of two children in the district, and one that is currently involved with the music program at the elementary school. One of the great things about music is that it touches academically, across the board academically, and this is an opportunity for them to do something that is both challenging and rewarding. Fifth and sixth grade is a time to inspire them to improve and gain confidence, to enjoy music and playing an instrument. I could imagine that this might be an easy age or an easy time for a student to give it up. It's more challenging, but they really, they need to be pushed to, to move on, to get to the point where they can have confidence and really enjoy it. And I think it's a critical age, and I find it hard to think that a ten-year-old, because parents can't get students to school early in the morning, a ten-year-old is going to decide that for the rest of their lives, they're not going to play an instrument. I think that's too, too young, I really truly believe that, that that is too young. I am asking the board to get parents, teachers, and the administration involved as it relates to the proposed changes to the music program for fifth and sixth grade. I am certain that a compromise can be made, and there are many parents that would be happy to participate in these discussions and brainstorm ideas, and we do it once before school, and once after school, once after school, once during the day, I think there is, there are many opportunities and things that we can discuss together. I am concerned about a few things, in my points there, I will read them all out, word for word, but I am concerned that there is no nerves in the, in the building, what about the children that have diabetes, asthma, epilepsy, serious allergies, et cetera, a person that is three, four minutes away can be very critical. The early bus, let's just give an example, the early bus arrives at our house at about six forty in the, eight in the morning, and returns at about four PM, that makes nine hours and twenty minutes for a ten-year-old, I think that's too much. My other question is, arriving at school at nine fifteen, not starting the orchestra until, did I say nine, seven fifteen, and arrive, not starting until seven forty, that's very unproductive time, that's twenty-five minutes that we could be doing something else, and so I'm concerned about that. So, I do truly believe that this will decrease the program dramatically, I've talked to a lot of parents, and I truly believe that this will, not just the kids that aren't serious, but the kids that have families or, for whatever reason, are not able to get their kids in by seven forty. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amy Shepherd, I'm a parent and a graduate in high school, who
participates in the band program from fifth grade to eleventh grade. Going off of Mr. Schaefer said around about seventy percent of one instructional day, that is, is your child participates in both either band or orchestra, and chorus, and regular music instruction, and that's, if chorus needs two times a week. Solely, my daughter participates in orchestra only, and regular music instruction, so really nine percent of one instructional week would be involved in music, and as a parent, I don't think that's astonishing amount, because when you consider how much academics are given, they need a release of music. Secondly, the feeder program for this phenomenal music program at Eden starts in fifth grade, starts in fourth grade, it, they depend heavily when they get to high school, on your fourth, fifth, and sixth graders that have their own experience. I strongly feel that moving this into the morning with drastic improvements to test our music program. There's a hundred and ninety students involved in music at Eden, and I think that is absolutely one hundred percent phenomenal, and I think it's something our district should be proud of and embrace, and not try to downsize. They also, for kids, they need instructional breaks throughout the day, you can look at research after research, I teach for that, I read the research, I get the research sent to me, about how kids need movement breaks, it's written in my child's IDP at this district that he needs to get up and have movement breaks, and that music is movement, it's getting their mind off of math, math, reading, reading, social studies, all this stuff, they need to have that released, and then they come back to the classroom after the evening. I'd really like to ask you as a board to highly consider this, and put our children first, and their kids first, thank you.
Hello, my name's Jeremy Crump, I have two children in the district, and you're probably going to hear the same thing that these nice ladies have said through my statement, but here it goes anyways, I have two children in the school district that this proposed change in the music program will affect. For our family, it'd be four days a week, which just does not work in the schedule. My daughter's a student that receives resource, extra help, she plays an instrument, she enjoys chorus, and she still maintains good enough breaks, yeah, not at all. I'm concerned if she doesn't have that break during the day, as last speaker said, she will not just be mentally, but physically exhausted, because a day will start an hour and twenty minutes earlier. Other concerns I have is that the children will drop off, will be dropped off at school at seven fifteen AM from high school bus, which, in my opinion nowadays, children, whether kids are behaving on a high school bus or not, however it is, they see nothing, they don't even begin exposed to that so early. So then, what students doing from seven fifteen to seven forty, while they are waiting for the band to start, what will they do? Who will be supervising children for twenty-five minutes? Is there going to be a nurse in the building, which we found out there wouldn't be, because there are children in the band orchestra program with A, with I, with F. I mean, please think about this before making this decision, because it is sad, if the children really enjoy playing instruments, I mean, they just wouldn't do it anymore. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Debbie Ellis, I have three children in the Eden district. I'm going to quote from your paper here, about needing critical mass, with having enough children to play the instruments, and that's why I think we should not be downsizing the music department. First of all, like I said, I have three sons in the district that play instruments, and I believe playing an instrument has taught them more than just playing. So let me remind you of what music teaches children, listening skills, coordination skills, memorizing skills, social skills, stress relief, math, patience, time management, and cooperating with others, just to mention a few. I want to express two upcoming changes about the music program. First was the proposal that Mr. Schaefer had about the before-school lessons for the elementary level. And secondly is Mr. Furlong's position not being filled. This is a twenty-five percent cut in the junior and senior music department, and statistically, music enrollment has been up over twenty-five percent in the last five years, which Mr. Schaefer had quoted that too. These two changes are greatly going to affect the overall music program, and I really believe it's going to affect the children in this district. I, I like how we are diversified in the sports, music, and academic programs in this district, and I, I really think that, that that would put the mistake to do what has been proposed. If you look at March thirty-first, Eden School District public budget, budget public poll, which happened on March thirty-first, I look back in the minutes, on page four, people's opinions, there was a little chart, on what people might like to cut. The administration cost was first, music was not. Check it out, page four, March thirty-first. Let me just say one last thing, I think you want all the children of the Eden Central School District to have diversity in the music, sports, and academics, so please keep the program the way it was. Restate Mr. Furlong's position, and find somebody to replace him, thank you.
Mark Vaughn and I teach vocal general music at the elementary building, and I wasn't going to come up here at all, you've heard everything, most of you've heard, you know what I think, Mr. Schaefer knows what I think. But I, having listened to what's been said, I thought I would just say a couple things. I'm wondering if the students who are spending all this time in the music program, if there's, if we've looked at their, how they're doing academically, and if they are spending all that time, are they falling behind academically? And I think if you did that study, you'd find out that's not really what's happening. So these students that are in the music program, and are involved in the music program, are not the ones that are having a problem. Now, I'm not saying that's exclusive, but I think if you did a, if you looked at that group of students compared to the non-music students, you wouldn't find that kind of a problem. So, taking away from their academics, I don't think that's what we're doing. If you go to other states, Nevada, Colorado, where public education is not what it is here in your state, it's another theme of mine, you'll find they just let the kids out on the playground, that's their break, and it is not the same thing as bringing them into my room, and giving them something that actively keeps their mind moving, and I hand them back to the, to the teachers, ready to learn. You know, if they're bringing back from some crazy thing that was happening outside, in the cafeteria, they're ready to learn, it's a whole different type, it has a place in education. Mr. Schaefer, I'm, I, I understand he does have a problem with minutes, there is something, there is some scheduling stuff that has to be done here, there is something that has to be addressed, I do understand that, I think we all understand that, and I, I second what Annette said, we should, I think, not be moving so fast here. This change was proposed to us really after the budget was passed, which is a completely different time for a discussion. From our end, we're limited as to what we can do once that budget is passed, and once we can talk about, what, what we can talk about using to, to fix a problem. So, Mr. Schaefer, we do understand that there's, there's a problem here, but we, we would say let's not move so fast, and let's have a committee, let's do something, and let's talk about how to fix this problem, without this kind of immediate, as Ms. Bayon said, drastic sort of change. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Gould, I have three children in the district, and I am also a music educator. I believe that all children in a public school deserve an equal opportunity to participate in an activity or an ensemble if they so choose. Moving the ensembles to before the start of the standard school day limits the number of children that can participate. Some parents cannot get their children to school that early in the morning, and for some, riding high school buses is not an option. By moving the ensembles before the prescribed school day, it makes a long day even longer. My child will wake up at six AM, and she will get home around three forty-five PM, that is almost a ten-hour day for a ten-year-old, and it's just too much. The resulting effect of this, of this decision has the potential to deteriorate, to deteriorate, if not kill, the instrumental program.